Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to this special meeting of the McLean County Board. This is Tuesday, May 11, 2021. Will you please rise? I'm sorry, I have to call the board first on the agenda. Okay, I have to call this meeting to order. Please rise to any location. Let's take a moment to honor some of our former county board members who served honorably with a sense of decency and respect for all their fellow colleagues during my tenure as vice chair and chairman of the board in the last 10 years. I'd like to name them at this time: Don Cavallini, Scott Murphy, Bill Casely, Mark Johnson, Dave Selzer, George Gordon, Victoria Harris, Carlo Rubestelli, Paul Segoviano, Eric Rankin, Ben Owens, Brian Scritchlow, Jacob Beard, Sonny O'Connor, Matt Sorensen, Sally Pine, Paul Finch, Julie Brant, Scott Black, and especially those who predeceased us, the Honorable Mayor Rich Buchanan and Stan Hozelton. Let us offer a moment of silence and reflection and personal prayer. And also, I'd like to offer my own personal prayer for a former fellow friend, Fred O'Malley, who gave his life in Vietnam, fighting for our freedom 55 years ago today. And a special prayer for those who choose not to stand, that they someday will learn to show respect and honor patriotism. I pray this. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Member Metzger. Member Schaefer. Member Smith. Member Solner. Member Thompson. Member Wachenski. Member Webb. Member Went. Member Woolrab. Member Barnett. Member Beer. Member Bloomfield. Member Chung. Member Klein. Member Erickson. Member Friedrich. Member Johnston. Member Lehman. Member Martin. Chairman McIntyre. Just a reminder, for those of you that have never been in this room, the little voice that almost looks like they're talking with bad breath, that's what you talk. Push it. If it comes up green, you are not being recorded. You are in the queue, okay? It only takes so many. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We have parents by members of the public and county employees in reference to an agenda item today, and we have 10 people who've applied to speak. Per county board rules, each person gets three minutes, and so we have a total allotment of 15, aggregate allotment of 15 minutes. And so our administrative staff will keep a total as we go, and we only record, keep track of people as they are actually speaking during that time. So we'll start out with a call-in from Ms. Joanne Yant. Joanne, are you here with us?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Welcome.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you fine, and you have the floor, and you have 30 minutes to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Joanne Yant. I am a 10-year resident on the far south Madison Street in District 3. In my professional and personal life, I am a change agent. That is, I work with organizational development and organizational change management. I am supportive of change that is necessary and informed, even if that change is difficult or unpopular. I am speaking tonight in opposition at this time to the redistricting proposal being considered. As someone who would be impacted by this change, as we all would be, in order for me to lend my support, I need to be able to review all rationale, potential impacts as reasonable, and proposed interventions, and all projected redrawn maps. I also need to be able to review the data being used to build this proposal. This change would affect people, and I would want to understand exactly how my neighbors' lives would be impacted. I request any, I also request that any redistricting proposal be abandoned until the most recent census data is made available. I would expect any redistricting proposal to be wholly validated by such data. Having the information I described would be the only way I could support a redistricting proposal. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Our next call-in speaker is Ms. Marie Strands. Marie, are you with us?
I am, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, you may go ahead. You have the floor. You have 3 minutes to speak.
Okay, well, I am a 25-year resident of McLean County, and live in several areas of the county, and I am speaking in opposition to the redistricting as well. As a voter in this county who has voted in the last, I don't know, 24 years of elections, I have never myself spoken out at a meeting, and I've never felt so compelled to have to speak. I strongly feel that the redistricting plan is politically motivated out of many unfounded fears and retaliation. We need to stop villainizing the quote-unquote "other side." A healthy democracy has many opinions, and let voters voice those opinions through their chosen leaders. The founders wanted it this way. It was never meant to be the other way around, and that is what this plan seems to be trying to do. Redistricting may be necessary, but it should be done by a nonpartisan group in a way that allows input. I'm not sure why there are some county board members who are opposing that option, because the state Republican Party is fighting to get exactly that for state districts. I urge you to please reconsider and do not dilute my vote in matters in the county in which I live, just because I am a city dweller. I have friends and family in rural areas of this county, and I travel rural roads often. I have spent a lot of money in businesses in our rural towns. Decisions of the county government affect all of us, and representation should be fair. I've heard someone that referenced Cook County's representatives to justify going to fewer districts, and I'm curious as to when we have ever held Chicago as a role model around here. Please consider a bipartisan commission for fair redistricting and vote your conscience. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Our next speaker is Ms. Claire Powell. Claire, are you with us? Claire Powell? Next is Ravi Devery. And Ravi, are you here in person?
No, I was not able to make it in person today.
Okay. All right, thank you. You have 3 minutes to speak. Thanks for joining us. We can hear you.
Thank you. I will keep it short and sweet. I just want to comment that, I've called in before, I am repeating that it is somewhat hypocritical for people on the board and other representatives of the Republican Party to repeatedly say the state needs to redo its redistricting process to be fair and open, and then to turn around and try to go fully partisan and jury-manner a new set of maps. There are many issues with our existing maps, even though some will claim otherwise. The method in which they were drawn last time was, again, under, best of everyone's understanding, done by one person in secret and pushed out. There are many violations of the county code regulating how they are supposed to be drawn. There are non-contiguous portions. There are many split precincts. Cities are not supposed to be split unless where unavoidable. All of these issues exist. I don't know why they weren't raised before, but they are a reality with our current maps. We need a qualified group of people to draw boundaries, to do it fairly, accurately, and within the confines of the law. Another thing I do want to comment on, during yesterday's meeting, the comment was raised about how the 9:00 AM board meetings served us well for 35 years. I would like to say, I would like to ask just who exactly the "us" that we're served is, because the people who these things should be serving are the people of the county, not the board members on the board. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ms. Joyce Mansell-Kay. Joyce, are you here with us? Joyce Mansell-Kay? Okay, we'll move on to our next speaker, call-in Ms. Sarah Breeden. Sarah Breeden?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yeah, welcome back. You have 3 minutes to speak, and you have the floor.
Thank you. I'm a constituent of yours in District 5. The committee meetings to date regarding redistricting, allowing public comment opportunities, have illuminated numerous problematic issues in the secretive planning behind the proposed move to five districts. The chair repeatedly refers to his allowing public comments as a way of being transparent and encouraging input. Neither is happening. Comments are being made, but it is all for show on the part of the chair. When the board chair won't even answer questions about his plan, yet committee members are expected to vote on the plan, we have a problem. When members of a committee are told they have to sign up as public speakers in their own committee meeting prior to the meeting, and then in feigned agreeability from the chair are allowed to speak, we have a problem. When Republicans and Democrats on the board cite backroom deals and a power grab by a select group without input from others of either party who might challenge the plan, we have a problem. In yesterday's WGOT article, an interview about redistricting, Member Barnett was quoted as indicating Chairperson McIntyre had rejected his call for a bipartisan advisory panel to help draw the map, and responded that Democrats posed a growing threat on the board and said he was trying to contain them. The audio of the interview is even more telling. Nothing about Chairperson McIntyre's behavior suggests Member Barnett's account is inaccurate. WGOT indicates Chairperson McIntyre denied Member Barnett's characterization of their conversations, and that he's been trying to work with both parties on a solution, suggesting Democrats haven't been willing to meet with him. This strains credulity. As we have all watched this unfold in real time, as members of both parties have asked for discussion with the chairperson and have been denied or ignored, instead, the chair paints the situation as everybody wanting to run to the media while he refuses to collaborate with the entire board. Equally incredulous is the idea that rural voters are being led to believe any of this posturing is about advocating for them. It is totally about the fear of losing power. Just look at the chair's petty comments yesterday, revealing how much he is still bitter about a bunch of good old boys having to give up their 9:00 AM meetings in order to accommodate others in a representative government. We all, rural and urban, deserve better than what has unfolded in our county board leadership. The entire county deserves representation, and fear mongering is a deterrent to achieving it. 10 districts with two representatives from each district with new, fair maps allow us for representation that reflects our population. Chairperson McIntyre, Member Went, and anyone else involved in plans to shut out others in order to retain power rather than plans to represent residents have shown us all who they really are.
Thank you. Next speaker is Ms. Willie Halbert.
Hello?
Ms. Halbert, yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, welcome. You have 3 minutes, and we can hear you.
Greetings to the McLean County Board. My name is Willie Holton-Halbert, a resident of McLean County, city of Bloomington for over 45 years. I reside in District 3, a retiree from the Illinois Department of Corrections. First, I want to thank you for allowing me the opportunity to share my concerns regarding the proposed redistricting changes. I am in support of maintaining the 10 districts with the two representatives per district plan. To reduce the districts to five, making larger districts, would be diluting the voices of small communities of interest. Larger districts will result in less direct representation and make it more difficult for many communities of interest to find a seat at the table. If you felt unheard in the district, we want to make sure that all people are being represented. Think about the district having 17,000 currently, and moving to a district of 34,000 to 37,000 residents will not help. I appreciate the special meeting call on this evening regarding the rules, committee decision. I'm requesting that the voices of the people in McLean County be heard and respected and maintain the current redistricting system that we currently have. I want to be clear on my support of maintaining the 10 districts as it ensures a broader representation. There appears to be an effort at the ninth hour to confuse this issue and concern by introducing a seven district with three representatives, but will still likely decrease the representation of all people in the district and lump larger groups with less representation. I ask each of you to ask yourselves what is best represented for the people of McLean County. And I have to add that a comment was made during a prayer regarding people not standing up for the flag, as it is a disrespect to our country. It is more about respecting our creed that we all deserve justice, and where people of color live should be truly valued and lives not just taken away. So when we make statements of that nature, please consider all people within our community, people of color that have had lives taken away from them for no reason at all. So consider everyone and be respected of our total community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Halbert. Our next speaker is Ms. Georgine Chiselle.
Yes.
Welcome. You have 3 minutes to speak, and you may begin.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to have my voice heard. My name is Georgine Chiselle, and I'm a resident of County District 3 and a member, a resident of McLean County, I'm sorry, of Bloomington Normal for 29 years. I love this area. I wouldn't trade it for nothing. I love the people here. I love everything about it except for the politics. My representatives, county representatives are George Went and Randy Martin. I would like to thank Member Martin for his vote on yesterday. I have heard the concerns of the people regarding changing the map from 10-2 to 2-8-5-4 representation. And after careful research, I agree we should maintain the 10-2 representation, which has been in place for, what, 40 years? And then I heard someone mention that, yes, we have some issues with it. Okay, let's work on those issues and keep it moving. I live in Ward 2, Precinct 13 of District 3, and as it stands, we are not very well represented now. Changing to 8-5-4 representation would dilute the representation even more. I just do not understand the reasoning behind the change. Is there new information the public does not know about that you have not shared, like maybe the census? This is not fair redistricting. This is not fair redistricting. Because my district, because my district, the county nursing home, and the McLean County Resilience will all be affected negatively. Just to mention a few, I am asking my member reps to please listen to the people who elected you and not to yourself. This is about the people for who you are supposed to be representing. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Chiselle. Our next speaker is here in person, Mr. Jeff Bertrand. You may come up to the podium over here, sir.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. Thus, us at home cannot hear the speaker.
Okay. Thank you for that, member Webb, we'll see if we can correct that. Yeah, we'll get it on for you. Okay, we're ready to go now, thank you.
All right, Jeff Bertrand, District Two. Over the past week, I have been troubled by what is happening regarding dialogue of redistricting. This does not seem to be an upfront process to those that have chosen to have you all represent us. Over the past few years, Democrats have worked hard to earn votes from citizens of this county. We now have a partisan group that has decided that it would be better to create a new map without discussing it with their colleagues. All board members were elected by voters of McLean County and should have a voice in the process. I stand before you today to ask that we have a bipartisan group that does what it is best to ensure all citizens of our county feel represented. This will most likely mean keeping the board at ten districts, but allowing for both parties having a say on how the map is drawn.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bertrand. Our next speaker is a call-in speaker, Mr. Joseph Johnston. Mr. Johnston, are you on?
Yes, sir, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome. We're running out of time here with our rule, but you do have, how much time? You have a minute and a half, I'm sorry for that, but you may proceed.
All right, well, I will speak quickly. Chairman McIntyre, I'm Chair Solner, and Stephen County Board Members. Thanks for allowing me to speak today on the topic of redistricting. The rule to be voted on today is to retain the current ten district structure. The arguments for and against the number of districts have already been made, and I will not repeat those here. This redistricting process has been one of the most divisive issues that the board has seen in recent years. This sort of divisiveness breeds ugly politics. I know that no one on this board wants ugly politics, and that many board members want what is best for the county. Chair McIntyre has been known to call for putting county over party, I wholeheartedly agree with him on this point. The county board should operate as a team. Redistricting should be a team effort, with feedback sought from all members. What I have seen over the past couple of weeks has not been willingness to work as a team, but rather an effort to force members to choose a side and be loyal to their party. A five district plan is not a team plan, it is not a compromise, and it does not unite. Over the past few weeks, the residents of McLean County have overwhelmingly indicated their preference for a ten district plan. A vote to retain the current board structure is a signal that you want to work across the aisle and avoid political stunts. The current structure has worked over 40 years. While other policies have served the test of time, have been recently changed, their deliberations have been short and non-controversial. While it's been claimed that the current map has already gerrymandered, thus necessitating a change, cleaning up gerrymandered lines in the present maps can be addressed in the next phase. Speaking of going forward, I am encouraged to hear that Chair McIntyre is considering forming a truly bipartisan and objective commission to present map options. I hope that this commission will truly be bipartisan and will make an honest and sincere effort to work together as a team to provide the best maps for this county. We all want what's best for the county. In closing, I ask the board members to vote to put residents over party and vote for ten districts in McLean County. Thank you and good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Johnston. With the permission of the, with the permission of the board, I'd like to circle back and call, is Ms. Claire Powell, have you called in?
This is Joyce Monsell-Kay, I've been a resident here for 64 years. And, by the way, I didn't get the second email giving me the phone number, so I didn't think you were going to have me speak, which is why I'm speaking last. I just happened to be listening to the meeting and heard my name called and was surprised. So anyway, I want nothing less than ten districts and two representatives. Otherwise, centers of interest would be diluted. I want open and transparent bipartisan meetings, respectfully. We need time for public comment and to discuss advantages and disadvantages of any plan. Again, I say I want ten districts and two reps like it's been for 40 years. Thank you for letting me speak. And I would just like to give a shout out to my representatives who have been doing such a good job, Sharon Chung and Val Lehman, thank you.
Thank you, Joyce, for joining us. Is Ms. Claire Powell, have you called in? No, going once? Okay, that concludes our public speakers today. Thank you very much to everyone. We'll move on our agenda to Item Six, a consent agenda. We actually have no items this time, so we'll go on to Item Seven, reported standing committees. And we have no standing committee reports because of the special meeting, but we'll go on to the Item B, 7B, which is the county administrator's report, Ms. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Chairman McIntyre. I do have an item to present for action, and I'll read that now. Request approval of a resolution to re-adopt County Board Rule 20-1, Size of the Board to Read. The McLean County Board, hereinafter called "The Board," shall be comprised of 20 members, and updating of County Board Rule 20-20, Board Districts to Read. For the purpose of electing members of the Board in 2022 and in succeeding years until the county is again reapportioned, the county of McLean is reapportioned into ten districts with two board members to be elected from each district. Pages three and four of your packet.
Now, thank you, we have the item for action, V1A, is there a motion? Motion by member Johnston, is there a second? Second by member Waczyzki. Any comments or questions or discussion? Member Went?
Yeah, I would like to make some comments. First of all, to clear up some information that's been around that's not true. Now, number one, somebody mentioned about the 2020 census figures. To wait for that, there's a problem with that, is the 2020 census figures will not be available until after August at least, and maybe as late as September. And the state legislature mandates that we get this done by July 1st. So we cannot anticipate using the new figures. There is a possibility, there's a lot of talk in Springfield about moving that date to September 1st. There's also talk in Springfield about moving our primary from March to June, which would change a lot of things, because then the filing and the districts and stuff wouldn't have to be done until much later. So I just want to clear that up, that's why we're sitting here. Now, up until recently, there was no question, and I think that there was questions that, yes, I was involved in the mapping 10 years ago. I was brand new on, I was fairly new on the board, I'd been elected, I think it was a couple of years before that. And yes, we worked with several of the members, including some of the Democrats, to get their districts set. In fact, the only objection that we had to the map once it was drawn was actually from Judge Caisley, a Republican, actually tried to amend the plan that the committee put forth, and it was voted down. But it was kind of interesting, because the Republicans had put up the plan, and then here, one of the older members of the board that were Republican voted against what the committee recommended. Anyway, so we developed that. And up until recently, there was no thought whatsoever, because when that was originally done, it did turn out that there were about six of us, including myself, that represent pretty much the rural area. And that didn't really concern us, that the 14 other members were all from the cities, because we assumed that everybody would be voting in the best interest of the county. We've had several instances where the six members who have voted no on an issue that affected the rural area, where the 14 members who live in the cities voted against the six of us. And as I put it in one meeting, as they were voting against us on a wind farm that was not wanted in a township, absolutely not wanted in that township, the residents didn't want it. And I just made the comment that if the six of us had the power to put a dump in the middle of Bloomington, the 14 of them would scream like hell. So anyway, as things went on, we had several other votes at different times that the six of us voted, and the 14 others voted against us. Now, there was no thought, in fact, it was a little early, but what spurred all of this was an ex-member of the board looked at the map, and he's in a rural area, or is from the rural area and has farmland, I guess, or something, but anyway, that the representation for the rural area wasn't very good. And he brought that to the Farm Bureau. And the Farm Bureau Board looked at it, and they decided that they would like to see something done about the representation. And the original recommendation was anywhere from four to seven districts. This is how it came about, because the Farm Bureau suggested that. As things progressed, and the Farm Bureau talked about it, it really came down to looking at the fact that we had ten districts. If you went to four districts, you'd have an odd number of people running at different times. And, or you could reduce the board or increase the board. And if you had seven districts, the same thing, you might want to increase the membership to 21 or whatever, let's see, what's four times? Anyway, you get what I'm saying, is you'd adjust the number of members of the board, which I don't think is going to go over, especially if we would reduce the board, like if we had four districts and we reduced the membership from 20 to 16, I think it would be very, I don't know who would vote themselves out of the office, but that's what would happen. So basically, the Farm Bureau settled on the five districts. And so that is basically why I followed what the Farm Bureau wanted, and I have gotten hundreds of calls, almost, wouldn't say that many, but I think all of the calls and emails that I got, except one, were Democrats. I did have one Republican call in supporting the ten districts. I have called several members, and especially, I did call the Republican, and she was confused. She lived in the rural area, and she, that was her big concern, because the false premise has been that the rural area would lose their voting power if you had five districts. That's what's been put out, because if we elected all people that live in the cities, they wouldn't pay attention to the rural.
Excuse me, member Went, but we are at our five-minute limit.
Let me finish one, three seconds.
Okay, thank you. If we have a lot of talk, by the way, if you are new here, we usually, I keep rounds, and if we have a long debate, I go through first round and second round, and you have another five minutes later on, okay?
All right, I'll just finish it. Ideally, if we could do it, it would be nice, and I don't know whether it would work with the population spread and everything, ideally, it would be the city, each board member would represent 45% of the city of Bloomington, 25% of the city of Normal, and, or 25% of the rural, and about 30% of the rural, or of Normal. And that way, each member would have an interest in all three areas of the county. And that, I think, and I think the Farm Bureau has come up with that idea, and believe that that would be the best for the county. Thank you much.
Thank you very much, member Metzger.
Call to the question.
Question's been called.
Parliamentary inquiry. Is the member calling the question? Is that, that's not a motion? I object.
I'm sorry?
I object to the calling of the question.
Well, that's what I will ask next, is there an objection to the question?
Yes.
Is there objection? All right. We take, I believe we take a vote, Chris. Calling question, this requires a majority vote for calling the question, if I am correct. And so at this time, we'll take a roll call vote. And so, and so if you know what you're voting on, you're voting on whether or not to call the question. It will take a majority vote. Please call the roll.
Member Metzger?
Yes.
Member Schaefer?
No.
Member Smith?
No.
Member Soldner?
Yes.
Member Thompson? Did I hear him? Member Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you. Member Waczyzki?
No.
Member Webb?
No.
Member Went?
Yes.
Member Woolrab?
No.
Member Barnett?
No.
Member Beer?
No.
Member Bloomfield?
Yes.
Member Chung?
No.
Member Klein?
No.
Member Erickson?
No.
Member Friedrich? Member Johnston?
No.
Member Lehman?
No.
Member Martin?
Uh, no.
We have...
Thirteen, thirteen no's.
Thirteen no votes, and so the motion to call a question fails, and we will resume our discussion. Do we have any more, any more discussion on the motion? Comments or discussion by anyone? Member Schaefer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to support the 10-2, and as this, as we've made this motion. Last night, I voted not to, but there was a reason for that, and I'd kind of like to explain that a bit. One of the things, we've, we've listened, as a member of Exec, I've sat there and listened to many, many people speak on what they believe is what we should do, whether it's anywhere from three districts to 20 districts. And I was looking for reasons for supporting those positions. And, and that's even why I asked member Barnett last night, why he had said some things, because I was looking for justification and, and that kind of thing to back up what I, you know, want to vote on, on how I want to vote. And so there were a lot of things that were said by a lot of people, supporting their position, and some of them were extremely sincere. Some of them, I'm not sure they were sincere, but that's okay. That was what they believed. And so I'm going to support this. And I have, it's kind of like a little caveat with it, because our districts, some of the things that were said by many of the people was that it almost was like pitting the city and town against the rural people. And so the rural people... And so, the rural people said that they didn't feel like they had enough representation. And that the rural, like Member Went just said, that the, the city and the town, the urban areas were overriding what the rural people really wanted. And then you had the, someone, people were saying about, well, we pay more taxes in the, in the, in the urban areas, so we have, you know, should have more say, and, and like, you're just keep, whatever it was, there were a lot of pitting against each other and, and that kind of thing, and it really, really bothered me. And so, I'm trying to, trying to figure out what way, how, how to make a decision as to which way I was going to go on this, because I knew that we had to have this full board meeting to make a final decision. And so, I decided to support this, because we are one county, and I heard numerous people speak, or the emails that we received from various people, that we are one county, we are, we're, you know, look at the whole of McLean County. So, what I am hoping for is, is moving forward in this, is when we look at the map phase, that we, we actually look at maps that, that stop that pitting of each other against each other. Stop the rural versus urban, the, I have more land than you do. I pay more taxes than you do, what, whatever you want to call it, you know. And, and when we look at the maps, to have, have districts, because everybody, a lot of people have said that we should redraw and have totally new maps. Well, that might be a good, a good plan, and that we should look at having members, districts drawn that have members from both the city or urban areas, and members of the rural areas in one district, because that will promote a greater understanding of each side. Whether you today, like I today, represent a district that's all in the city of Bloomington. And I, I lived in the county for thirteen years, you know, but that was a long time ago. Things are much different today in the county, and there's a lot of different attitudes. And, and to say, yes, they need a different kind of representation, isn't, that's not what we're talking about here. They need people to listen to them and to understand their issues. And, and, and that, when I voted yesterday, is because, it's like, yes, people in the rural areas, I heard you talking, I heard what you said. And so, then, if you have people who are living in the city that are representatives, then, and you have county areas or, you know, rural areas, that you can have a better understanding, and the same is vice versa. If, if the representative happens to live in the county, but they don't really necessarily, and they've always lived in the county, they've never had any experience in the city, and, and like I said, ten years or a long time, when I lived in the county, it's not the same as, as, you know, maybe when you, if you grew up in the county, but now have lived in the city for years. So, that would give them a better understanding of the issues of the people in the urban areas. And so, I think that moving forward to make us one whole county, because we have to represent everyone, not one that pays more taxes, or one that has more land, or, or anything along those lines, that we have to look at ourselves as county board representatives to be representative of every single person in this county. And yes, we all have our districts that have possibly various differences in, in the, and who we're representing, but it's still one county in the end.
Member Schaefer, your time has expired.
Okay, I'm almost done.
Alright.
We can, we can be better, and and, and I'm one of those ones that put country over party. I will put county over party when this comes to this kind of thing, and that's what I'm doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak at this time? Uh, I'm sorry, Member Klein?
Okay, I'm not quite sure how long the conversation will go on, so I wanted to say a couple of things. The first thing I wanted to say is, just to offer a, just a sincere and tremendous appreciation to all of the people who have engaged in this process, who have called, who have texted, who have stopped me in the grocery store and asked me wonky questions about redistricting. It's really wonderful to see that we have had such a turnout, even if we had a very short amount of time in, in order to have that discussion with you. In a county of a hundred and seventy thousand people, it's my opinion, we should have that kind of turnout every month, right? Of everything that we're doing, and I just want to thank you for commenting and making your voices heard. Every person I spoke to, I learned something from. Every person I spoke to gave me a better perspective, and I am richer for it, and I thank you, and I hope you continue to do that. With that said, I am, of course, going to be voting to maintain the ten districts with two members each. But I also wanted to say that, from a real sincere place, that most of the people that I have spoken to have expressed a sincere deficit of trust in this process. We do not want to feel or to appear as though we have jerry-rigged or played around with or, or done dirty things with a, a mapping process. This is a ten-year effect, that everything we do here will affect for ten years down the road. So, I'd like to appeal to the chairman and appeal to the members here, that as we go forward in this process, that the mapping does not happen in secret, that the mapping happens with a bipartisan commission, a bipartisan commission that is selected not by one member, not by the chairman, but by all of us, so that there is fair and honest representation. None of us want to see maps that injure anyone, rural or urban. So, let's please try to proceed in a scientific manner, right? A mathematical manner, a statistical manner, a way that will make sure that our county can be proud of this process and not walk around for the next ten years claiming some sort of grievance. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Klein, your points are well taken. Who, does anyone else would like to speak this time? If not, then we will call the question. A yes vote is to support the resolution on page two of your packet. Having twenty members on the board, ten districts, two members each, and we will, I ask you this time to call a roll.
Member Metzger?
Yes.
Member Schaefer?
Yes.
Member Smith?
Yes.
Member Solner?
No.
Member Thompson?
Yes.
Member Wacinski?
Yes.
Member Webb?
Yes.
Member Went?
No.
Member Woolrab?
Yes.
Member Barnett?
Yes.
Member Beer?
Yes.
Member Bloomfield?
No.
Member Chung?
Yes.
Member Klein?
Yes.
Member Erickson?
Yes.
Member Friedrich?
Yes.
Member Johnston?
Yes.
Member Lehman?
Yes.
Member Martin?
Yes.
Are you voting, sir? Okay, Chairman McIntyre voted yes. I have seventeen yes and three no. I had three no's of Mr. Solner, Mr. Went, and Ms. Bloomfield.
We have seventeen yeses and three no's, and the motion is carried. We'll move on now to appearances by members of the public, and we have no one in any reference to, not on the agenda this time. Other business and communication, do we have anyone? Member Smith, is this going to be pertinent to the business of the county board?
Uh, yes.
Thank you.
I would just like to take, take a moment to thank every member of the board for being here and being a part of this process, but also to our staff, I know this past couple of weeks has been really hard, especially as we transition, transition back into meeting in person. So, I just want to take a moment to thank everyone and, and our staff.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Smith. Well, we have had three public information sessions, we've had a lot of speeches from members of the public, and we had our meeting today, we had our executive committee meeting. As you know, as chairman, I determined that the best way to, to do this and get public input was just do it under the executive committee rules, and I think it worked out pretty well. I know I've been extremely criticized by many people here, but I, I want you to know that that's the most input that we've ever had on a county, and I'm sure there's many counties that haven't had this much. And so, I'm, I'm hoping that it's been a good thing, there's been a, a lot of heightened interest in our county board, more so than ever, and we're encouraged to have that public participation as we go on through the rest of our process. The rest of the process is yet to be determined, so we are a committee legislative structure type of government. It's difficult to have a town meeting with twenty people, where everybody has input on everything, but we will try. As we have all the way back into the search committee and the blue ribbon committees, we will try to get input to the best that we can, to see that everybody has some say in this, through one process or another. But a lot of times, we have to do, go through the committee structure in order to do that. And this is much different than our, than our local municipalities, who have one, one council and one meeting. But I think it works well, I've been here twenty years, and I, I still have a lot of belief in what we are doing. I have nothing else at this time, and so, thank you all for coming and participating. Thanks to all the public who participated in this, and this meeting is adjourned.